All right, excuse our technical difficulties. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting, the February 16th Village Board of Tinley Park, meeting to order, and start, if you'd all rise and join us to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Mr. Clerk, if you please call a roll.
Roll for regular village board meeting, February 16th, 2016. Trustee Maher.
Here.
Trustee Grady.
Here.
Trustee Penito.
Here.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Present.
Trustee Yonker.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
First item of the agenda is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
I'd object to the agenda. I ask that personnel, independent legal counsel, and communications be placed on it. I don't see it here. Actually, that's my objection.
So noted. Any further discussion?
Need a second.
Okay, we need a second, please?
I thought we had.
It was moved and seconded.
The discussion will reflect the trustee Penito's objection.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed, may.
Motion carries. Item number two, approval of the minutes, the regular village board meeting held February 2nd, 2016. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I've asked that the section on page five of the minutes, that when David Petroni of Buckeye Community Hope Foundation stated that he requested the village not implement a moratorium, the minutes did not have the "not" in there. So we will need a stylistic change would do, but that's where it belongs.
Any other changes to be made? So the motion on the floor would be to amend the minutes as suggested by the clerk. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, approval of the consent agenda items. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please identify the item.
Item three, consent agenda. A, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, September 10th, 2016, from 6624 to 6660 Ravinia Drive, between 3:00 PM and 9:00 PM. And B, payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $2,385,287.98, as listed on the vendor board approval reports dated February 5th and February 12th, 2016. This is a roll call.
Are there any comments, or anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I'd like to move resolution number 2016-R-007, approving a final plan of subdivision for Brookside Meadows PUD Phase Two located generally north of La Porte Road and west of Long Meadow Drive and within the Brookside Meadows planning development. I'd like to move this to the table at the direction of our village attorney.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Item number five, trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you.
Can you speak on that?
It's been tabled, so there's -- it will get brought up again at a later time, so you'll have a chance, should --
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
No, I'm sorry. We'll try to be a little bit better with the mics.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number five, I move to consider ordinance 2016-O-005, granting a variation from the maximum allowable freestanding sign height for International Kia at 8301 West 159th Street and within the B5 Automotive Service zoning district.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. The petitioner of All Rights Sign Incorporated on behalf of the Patterson Sign Group and International Kia are requesting a four-foot, one-and-a-quarter sign height variation of the zoning ordinance where the maximum allowable sign is 10 feet. The variation will allow the petitioners to construct a freestanding sign with a maximum height of 14 feet. According to the petitioner's application, the variation has been requested due to the need to remain competitive with the nearby car dealerships and to complement with corporate standards. The proposed sign is lower than the existing sign at the site that was used by a former car dealership. The zoning board of appeals has held a public hearing on January 28, 2016, and after consideration of the findings of fact, voted 5-1 in favor of recommending this variation to the board.
Any further discussion from anybody on the board? This will act as direction to village attorney to draft the ordinance requesting the variation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I move to consider ordinance number 2016-O-006, granting a variation from the required front yard setback to Jason and Monica Rubin for a fence for the property located at 18251 South 64th Court and within the R4 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our petitioners, Jason and Monica, are seeking approval for a 25-foot front yard setback. This variation will allow for the petitioners to construct a five-foot tall PVC fence at a zero-foot setback on the south side of 183rd Street of the corner lot at 18251 64th Court. The variation has been requested in order for the property owner to replace an existing fence, a previous homeowner installed, and the existing fence, pardon me, that was installed in 2000, with a building permit but without a variation. The existing fence was damaged recently with the petition, and the petitioners have proposed to construct a new fence at the same location. Once again, this was held at the zoning board of appeals public hearing on January 28, 2016, and after consideration of the findings of fact, voted 6-0 in favor of recommending the request of variation with one condition requiring a diagonal corner cut to the southeast corner of the fence. This condition was recommended to ensure adequate line of sight for people traversing the public sidewalks near south and east sides of the petitioner's property. The police department has recommended that this diagonal corner cut setback be a minimum of five feet from each property line.
Thank you. Once again, this will serve as direction to village attorney to draft the ordinance with this being first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider awarding a contract to Midwest Air Pro for upgrade and expansion of the fire department's exhaust removal system.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Each of the village's fire stations is outfitted with an exhaust removal system to evacuate vehicle exhaust while running inside the building. The exhaust system, which has been in place since 2001, reduces the risk of exposure to hazardous environment of those working within the stations. The proposed expansion of the system will accommodate the growth of the village fire apparatus that has occurred since the original installation. The expansion will also accommodate the placement of the village's third-party ambulance service within the fire station. The village's ambulance provider has indicated that they will reimburse the associated cost for the ambulance upgrades. The project was advertised in accordance with state and local bidding guidelines, and the village received one bid as follows, Midwest Air Pro Incorporated for $45,905. This item was discussed at the Public Works Committee on September 22nd, 2015, and recommended for approval.
Thank you. This item is an expenditure and roll call will be necessary. Mr. Clerk?
Item seven, on roll call for awarding of contract to Midwest Air Pro. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
No.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove this item from the table. In doing so, I would like to note that if and when the administrative committee revisits this item, it will be duly posted on the agenda of the budget audit and administrative committee, which is available to the public. And if subsequently brought to the board of trustees, it will be duly posted on the agenda of the village board for at least two readings, and that agenda will also be available to the public. I would also like to note that this item has been under consideration to accommodate the video recording of the village board meetings and has been under consideration for at least three to four months.
There's a motion on the table to table this item indefinitely, well, actually remove it from the table and remand it back to the budget committee. Is there any -- do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider, the board consider a resolution number 2016-R-008, approving the placement of Army asset equipment on publicly owned land.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Continue.
The VFW, on behalf of the Tinley Park Veterans Commission, has been working on the application to the U.S. Department, to the U.S. Army Donations Program to obtain a piece of surplus military equipment for the benefit of the Veterans Commission, the VFW post, the American Legion post, and all Tinley Park veterans. They have been working on this application for several months and have identified the vicinity for the placement of the equipment. The vicinity of the placement would be Veterans Parkway, but the exact location has not been And it's not been selected because it's not known what type of equipment will be designated by the Army. The address in the resolution that I'm bringing to the board is the closest identifiable address to the prospective location. This resolution allows the placement of equipment on public land and commits the village to paying the cost of transporting the equipment and placing the equipment, and is not to exceed $10,000. The purpose of obtaining and displaying the equipment is to assist us in remembering our veterans for all their sacrifices in defending our great nation.
Thank you. This item is for first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, trustee Brady.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider ordinance number 2016-O-007, amending section 50.025 of chapter 50 of the Title V of the Tinley Park Municipal Code Water Bills.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
At least as early as 1977, the village has allowed 15 days for payment of quarterly utility bills before a 10% late charge would be assessed against the outstanding balance due. The due date was subsequently extended to 20 days. A survey was recently conducted on behalf of the Budget Audit and Administrative Committee that indicates the 10% late charge appears to be the most common rate used in municipal water utilities throughout Illinois. However, upon review at its meeting held on January 26, 2016, the Budget Audit and Administrative Committee expressed a desire to extend the time that customers could pay their utility bills without late fee, as well as to reduce the rate of the late fee charged. The ordinance affects the changes authorized by the committee to extend the due date for the utility bills from 20 to 25 days and to reduce the rate of the late charge from 10% to 5%. Additionally, the application of the late charge is changed to be calculated against the current billing charges and not against the prior balances that may still be outstanding. Tinley Park utility customers also have the ability to create their own budget billings, by the way. This is sort of an advertisement, by making prepayment against their accounts at any time. So you can go online and make prepayments. You can set up your own budget plan if you want, because your utility bills may be a little too high on a quarter, if they're paid on a quarterly basis. Customers can access their accounts online to view consumption history, make a one-time payment, or to set up automatic bill payments with their preferred bank account or credit card. From the village website, www.tinleypark.org, click on Residence, and scroll to Utility Bill Pay Options for more information. Following the adoption of this ordinance, these charges will become applicable to the utility bills dated April 1, 2016, and thereafter.
Any questions from the board on this particular item? This is for first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, the chair would like to ask that the board consider the appointment as recommended by the chairman of the Senior Services Commission, the appointment of Grant Steve as a member of the Senior Services Commission. May I have a second, please? Or a motion to the liaison?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12, Clerk Ray.
The 12 and 13, Mr. Mayor, members of the board are simply announcements. We'll be announcing this evening, under item 12, the availability of the eligibility report for the redevelopment plan and project for the village's legacy Tiff District, and let me hasten to add, the legacy there is not the legacy plan. It's named after a piece of property that's the legacy property of a corporation in town in Pandu. And I add that so it doesn't, well, understandably, create what's happening. That's just an announcement. And you can begin reading that, if you choose to want to, tomorrow. Item 13, here at the village hall. Item 13, consider the announcement for a public meeting to present the eligibility report and redevelopment plan and project for the village's legacy Tiff District. Again, same name. And let me ask Mike if there's any dates we should be putting in there.
March 10th, 6:30 PM, in the Colson Center.
Okay, this is item 13, so the March 10th in the Colson Center, which is the big facility in the back of the village hall. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Ray. Item number 14, comments from the board and staff. Any board members here to make any comment? Any -- oh, go ahead.
I will.
Sure, Michael.
I did hope that we would be talking today about several issues. One is the appointment of the independent internal investigator. I'm hoping that that'll happen in closed session today as well. I had asked that personnel be on the agenda. I hope that we'll be doing something with that in closed session today. In addition, I'd asked that communications be on the agenda. I think there's some things that don't always get to the public or some of the voting board members. I might just want to ask perhaps if we could maybe put that as an unfinished business item and keep these on the agenda until they're all resolved.
Actually, the last one is on, we just didn't get to it. Last week, it's on the committee of the whole, so that's there. All three items, trustee asked me to put on, and I put them on the agendas where they're most appropriate for now, which is the executive committee after this meeting, because that's when that's supposed to be discussed. But, and on the communications, it's on the committee of the whole.
The open --
Yeah, in fact, I had prepared a presentation on it, agreeing completely, almost, maybe completely, with what the trustee's point is. And I have my charts.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else care to make comment from the board? Or staff? Seeing as there are none, anybody from the public care to comment?
My name is Matt Coglan. I live at 17245 South 68th Court. I've been a resident of Tinley Park for 18 years. Most of my comments and questions are related to, as you can imagine, the proposed development at a northeast corner of 183rd and Oak Park Avenue, the reserve. In our previous board meeting, it was stated that the trustees would actually identify an independent government ethics investigator to perform an investigation, and so I simply wanted, on behalf of my fellow citizens, to understand, has that individual been identified as of yet?
That's the subject of the executive session this evening.
Okay. Absent an opinion from an independent third-party investigator, will anything proceed, absent that investigation, relative to the reserve?
I believe that the plan commission has tabled that item for now, and the meeting that was supposed to have occurred on the 18th has been canceled, so that would not come up at the very soonest until there's some plan commission. I know there's some other work that's being reviewed on that particular development, so I don't see it coming up quickly for a vote, at least at this point in time, till some of these issues are resolved. And I think, based on the input that we've had from the citizens, that these meetings will be very much a part of that, so that you're kept informed as to the status of that particular development.
Okay. And then, I guess then, thirdly, we understand that you're looking for an expeditious outcome in terms of getting to a resolution. Given that we have not identified the investigator yet, there is no need to unduly set a timeline for this. I noticed in the paper, there was a statement that we would have this done, hopefully within 40 days. We're not setting any specific timeline, other than to get to the truth and to get all of the facts and all the data on the table. Is that correct?
As quickly as possible.
Okay. So, just in recap, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that was on record, again, is simply to say, we want to make sure, as residents of Tinley Park, that nothing is mischaracterized. We believe very strongly in the community that we have here. We believe in a diverse cultural community that actually does its fair share. So again, just reviewing some of the facts, more than 37% of our students today actually enjoy free hot lunch. Over 20% of our housing inventory and inventory for houses here in Tinley Park actually categorically meets the requirement of being affordable housing. And today, we actually have a surplus of those specific locations that are available. So I just want to make sure all those things are on the record, on behalf of the rest of the people here as well.
Could you be, I'd like to get that, so we put it in the list.
If you've got that summary of highlights for the clerk's office.
So we can go with the minutes under your comments.
Yep, we can make sure and verify that.
Thank you, Mr. Coglan. Anybody else care to comment?
Mayor, Board, Peter Croner, Old Iron Court, and Tinley Park. I just have a couple of questions of follow-up from my last time I addressed the board, to Mr. Vandenberg, as well as to the board members. Just some questions regarding the whole fiasco with the development that we're talking about. Can I ask one question? Were there any other projects that came to the board or came to the planning commission to be developed in the legacy district in 2015, other than the reserve?
I'd be going from memory, I believe there was a senior project that was discussed that was approximate to St. George School, and I believe that that never moved forward due to failure of funding from the Illinois Housing Development Authority.
So other than the senior housing, the only project that the planning commissioner and the board was aware of?
Well, I'll direct that to staff, because that's all that I was aware of. I don't, I can't speak for staff. Because they see a lot more, you know, it's a winnowing process, so they see a lot more than we do.
The plan commission approved a 16-unit townhome development called Union Square Townhomes on 179th Street and Oak Park Avenue in August of this year. So that was also approved.
Did that need any variance or text amendments or anything to the legacy? So follow the code specifically?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next question. I know the public hearing for the reserve was originally scheduled for 8/20, and looking through the Tinley Park minutes, I saw that there was public notice given on 8/2. However, on 8/20, the motion was tabled, because the board hadn't had enough time, I guess, to review what the planning commission, for whatever reason, the motion was tabled. I guess I go to the attorney for this, village attorney. Does there have to be another public hearing notice published in the papers since that original public hearing was tabled and did not happen and was rescheduled for 9/3?
There was no public hearing required for the reserve, and 8/20 and 9/3, I don't know if those are the right dates. Are you talking about the recent action of the plan commission?
I'm talking about the plan commission held a public hearing, according to the South Town, published 8/2. It was supposed to be for August 20th, 2015. At, on 8/20?
I don't think that was for the reserve.
It's in the South Town, it was. I can pull it up here, if you guys want to see it.
I'm just not a --
Okay. I guess here's my --
That's the notorious text amendment.
Right, right, right. That's what, yeah, that's what it was, a public hearing on a text amendment regarding the reserve, sure. Okay, the text amendment was supposed to be a public hearing for that on 8/20.
Okay.
It was tabled.
Okay.
Rescheduled for 9/3. Does the state statutes or local statutes dictate that a new public hearing notice be published in the paper to announce the new public hearing date, since the original one was canceled?
But it occurred on 9/3, right?
That is correct, but there was no notice in the paper that it occurred, that there was a public hearing scheduled for 9/3 about the text amendment.
I have not reviewed the notices for that public hearing. I don't know.
Could you do me a favor? Would you review that as part of this investigation? Because I think it's key here, because I don't believe, I have the, in the little iPad here, I've got the South Town notice of what the public hearing that was scheduled for 9/3 was. Nowhere in there was the reserve or the text amendment notified, or the public was notified that those were to be discussed on that date.
I will.
I would appreciate that. And I'll give you my, I'd like to get your email, I'll give you my email, because I like to hear what the answer is to that, please.
Okay.
A couple of other questions I have for either, for whoever would want to answer these. On May 12th, the developer met with the mayor pro tem, which I assume is you, Mr. Seaman?
Yes, sir.
And he requested a support letter from the mayor pro tem. Apparently, you refused to give him that letter.
What I was advised by counsel, especially since at that particular time I was acting as mayor, I had not been placed in the office yet, I'd still, at that time, I'd still held my trustee office. On the opinion of counsel, I was asked to poll my fellow board members, at which time I did, and they chose not to endorse it, and I respected that request.
Did you then give, or did the board give, the planning director approval to write a zoning compliance letter to the IDHA?
I did not. I don't think there was direction from the board on that particular item.
Would you anticipate, as a member of staff, since the staff reports to the board, that the board would direct staff whether or not to give that letter of recommendation to the IDHA?
I mean, that may be a staff function. I don't, I don't know that that --
I think that's something, I think that's a major part of what this investigation is going to look at.
Okay. Because looking at the timeline that's published in the Tinley Park minutes, June 15th, the planning director provides a developer with a zoning compliance letter based upon conceptual plans, after the mayor pro tem refused to give a letter of support for the IDHA application. On June 19th, the planning director writes her own letter to the IDHA stating, and I quote, "That is my opinion that the applicant has addressed this requirement regarding the neighborhood flex zoning district for street-level commercial uses by placing commercial-type uses such as their leasing office on the first floor of the proposed building along the street. Additionally, the village is currently pursuing a text amendment to the legacy code, in parentheses, zoning ordinance, to merely allow street-level commercial and not require street-level commercial for this area, as is present in the legacy code." This was written on June 19th. At the last meeting, I asked if -- At the last meeting, I asked if this text amendment, if there was a specific project in mind, as to why we were pursuing this text amendment, back in June. And I was assured by the Planning Director, actually, she didn't answer my question, the mayor asked the question again, when I didn't get a response, and she assured the mayor and the board, that there was no single project in mind. Yet, during all this time in June, she is feverishly working behind the scenes to support this project, both with the IDHA, and going against the Mayor Pro Tem's, as well as the board's determination not to write the letter of recommendation to the IDHA. Then, on June 22nd, the Planning Director provides a developer with a letter, with the opinion that the proposed development should be considered infill development. Can somebody explain to me what infill development is?
That's a term of art in the planning business. I...
I can read it.
Yeah.
I've got Wikipedia, so. I kind of figured that would be the answer. It's very important why this, why I'm bringing this up. Infill development, in urban planning, infill is a rededication of land in an urban environment, usually open space and new construction. This type of development is essential to renewing blighted neighborhoods, and knitting them back together with more prosperous communities. I'm a little bit caught here, as to why, not only did she write a letter of recommendation to the IDHA, stating, back in June 19th...now, please remember, when I came up here, I asked about the public hearing, about the text amendments. It wasn't even a matter of public hearing, until September 3rd. Here, she's writing letters in June, on behalf of the developer, not only regarding infill development. And the reason why that's important is because the developer took that to the IDHA, and says, "Look, it, Tinley Park needs my help, guys. They have issues here with development in this area. I'm going to help them. I'm not only going to sell tax bonds, but I'm going to help these guys. And this is why it's important, IDHA, that you support, and you accept my application, and approve my application." You know, I hear everybody talking about this investigation, but I did this in a matter of a couple of days, and I'll tell you, you guys did a great job in passing out information as well, but it's all right there in black and white, guys, in your Tinley Park website, exactly what happened.
That's why I think this will be sooner than rather than later.
I sure hope so, because, and I'm going to tell you something. My opinion, if I was on the board, and as a member of this audience, as a member of, as a resident of Tinley Park, I have no confidence in our Planning Director, or the Assistant Planning Director, because both were at fault in going outside their boundaries, and around the board, and outside the best interest of the residents of Tinley Park. I did want to bring up one other note here, too. You know, a text amendment, the reason why text amendments are made is for the betterment of the community. When I go through the Legacy District plan, it talks about the commercialization of downtown, to maintain the historic values of downtown. And I look at what the Planning Director wrote regarding that. Is it really feasible to expect development to have the entire first floor as commercial, and the rest as residential? And then I look at those buildings that are across from Durbin's, and you guys, whatever side of the street is, west side of Oak Park Avenue. That entire street has first floor, commercial, residential above it, and it works. I look at 183rd and Harlem, that nice building that's on the corner there, first floor, commercial, the rest of it residential, and that's outside the scope of Legacy District. So, my answer is, it works. The plan works. Let it work. There is no reason to go around the board, to go around the residents, to go around the ordinances that we have in this town, for either personal gain, or for whatever reason to help a developer, an out-of-town developer, come in here and manipulate our planning process, and our zoning process, for their betterment. And again, I'm pulling this all up from Tinley Park.
Thank you.
It's very simple.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You'd like to identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Kristi Hines. I represent the real residents of Tinley Park, and I just had a few questions that I would like to ask. First, I'm wondering about the public comments section, that was in the agenda today. The one that I saw online, and I'm sorry, I was late to this meeting, I had to take my son to practice, it said, there was some information attached. Was that information attached to the thing that was online? Because that was not there.
Yeah.
Okay. I did not see it. Okay, if it is, I will go back and look. And then, my second question, about the other overflow room, just like the previous time that I was here, I got stuck sitting in the overflow room. Is there anything, or a timeline, we could talk about, about improving the video audit quality in that room?
I'll defer to the clerk on that.
Wonderful.
He's been working on that.
Yes, it's, we've, we're attempting, and I'm sure we'll get it. We've talked to the school districts, one high school district, and grade school district, including virtually down an exact spot, to get the auditoriums.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Because, yeah, we could really use it. When people want to come here and say things, you can't hear anything in that other room, and the feedback is awful. I can't tell who's talking in the screen. You're like this big, so I have no idea who is speaking.
We apologize for that.
That's okay.
I must tell you this, that last Friday, a number of you came in, and knocked on our door, at the clerk's office, and said, "Are you planning on this?"
We are now.
Sure, well, I understand this...
I should say, we had it all worked out before then, we were thinking, but we went faster.
I understand, this is new to you, as it is to me. I didn't, this is my first, I'm sorry to admit, year attending meetings, since, except for the ones that had to do with my fence or property, I really haven't attended these meetings in the past. I have watched some of them online, that some people were graciously enough to record them, so I could view what was going on. But if there's a better way to give that information to the public, I know my group has charged me with trying to find that information. If we could put it on Skype, or something else, or maybe live, I don't know, broadcast this somehow, I know it's much, much cheaper, and much lower cost than it used to be a long time ago. I know a lot of residents would really appreciate the ability to see that, so maybe they could watch it from their home, rather than three or four days later, after the fact. Or if they can't, at least the ability to see it better here, or somewhere else.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that. And then, my next question is, if this does remain this way, is there a better way that we could get the public comments? They came and yelled into the room, like the last time, "If anyone has public comments, to come now." And I literally had to run, all the way from the other way to get up here, or I was going to be shut out for comments. I don't know if there's a way we could write our names in, if we wanted to comment, or something better. It's just a little, if I was elderly, there would be no way possible, they could ran all the way from there to here, to make their comments.
I think there's some rules in the process...
Right, that would be great.
That has gone back to the committee, and, you know, we wanted, because of the discourse that's gone on during this subject, not to cut things off, or not to shorten it, so we've put those back to committee for further consideration. But I think that some of the points that were in there probably make a lot of sense to the issues you've raised. The other piece that I'd like to raise, as well, because I know that the clerk has talked about, you know, getting to high schools, and some other larger places, and other places of the village, too, because not all, we're not exactly in the center of the village these days here.
Right.
What I'd like to do, and we'll start this in March, are basically some town hall meetings, and so I'm working with staff now to set a date, and to come up with, you know, the types of information that would be available to you, you know, topical items that you all are interested in. So, hopefully, we'll get that rolling in March, and once again, try to give myself, give the board, more access to you, on an open forum basis. I mean, these are business meetings, these are somewhat challenging, to get through an agenda like you just have seen.
Oh, sure.
And really get one-on-one, and talk to you about issues that concern you.
Right.
So, that's a work in progress.
Wonderful. I know the residents would appreciate that, especially the ones that have hot-button items. I'm sure you don't have to have the ones about the fences, and all that things. But I know it all gets mixed up into one, so if we have any large-scale zoning issues, or maybe large-scale business projects, or things that are pertinent to the way the board meetings work, maybe if we could consider just making those meetings in a larger area, or something else, I know everyone would appreciate it, myself included. And then, finally, I know it wasn't on the agenda, and I asked the last time, but I'm just asking one more time, about the Citizen Advisory Board, that they brought up for advising for the Planning Committee, for...
Yeah, there's an ad hoc committee that's been formed.
Right, okay. Right. Has that been selected yet?
Yes.
Because, okay, because that was another reason, when being in the other room, they selected people right there, and anybody who was stuck in that other room, they kind of did a you, you, you.
Well, there were people that showed specific interest.
Right.
The product of this group's work will be public, and to everybody, you know, you'll have access to it. I'm sure, Mr. Coghlan, we've got Trenton back there, Trenton Ridgeway.
Right.
And, I don't know if...
Right, well, they took...
I don't see the other members here, Roxanne, or Charlie, but you'll hear.
Wonderful. They took my name at the end of that meeting, and it's just that, we represent two different areas in the village.
Sure.
And I just wanted to make sure that my group was represented in there, especially, it seemed like they were all men, and I'd also like a woman on there, if possible.
No, there is Roxanne, Roxanne DeVos is on.
Wonderful. Well, then, the more the merrier, so that everyone is included. I just wanted to make sure, I, again, couldn't run from one side to the other.
Thank you, Kristi.
So, thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
So, I just was speaking with a couple of the people, and I just wanted to go back and ask the trustees, if you could just show, by raising your hand, item number six was related to a fence for Jason and Monica Rubin. If the trustees could show, just by raising your hand, if you, in fact, placed a vote, one way or the other, if you'd just let us know, did you place a vote relative to that fence?
It was first reading, so it was a voice vote, and the second reading, when it goes up for adoption, is when there's a roll call, so everybody knows.
Right, so just a voice vote. Did anyone place a voice vote? Did you actually say?
There were no nay votes on it.
100% yes.
Okay, so the question would be, on a 16 and a half million dollar project, did any of the trustees place a vote?
Okay, we get it.
I had some questions for the trustees, and Mr. Mayor. Some of you guys were not here at the February 4th Planning Meeting. I'd like to ask you guys, that you take this in your executive meeting, and discuss some of the, some of the ways things were handled by some of your village staff, and one of them being Mr. Niemeyer. I asked, I asked at the February 4th meeting, if any of the engineering or soil borings have been done for that project, or Phase 1 or 2 of that. He clearly said, "No, nothing's been done." That's not true, it has been done. We have your letter dated July 26th, from CM Lavoy and Associates, to you guys. The soil borings are 100% complete, and the geotechnical report will be issued within the next few days. I have an issue with that. I wish you, if you guys could discuss that in your meeting, about how our village managers handling that. I also asked a question...
Yeah.
I also asked a question to Mr. Niemeyer, about how they went about researching Buckeye Foundation, because he clearly stated that the police investigated past projects, they spoke to, you know, the other police departments, checked for problems. I did my own research, and the paperwork that they issued, it's like a, it's like going to Product Dynamics. It's like a generic form of questions, and they ask all these questions that don't really pertain to it, and one of the most, the part that sticks to me, because that's what I enjoy, is results of internet search and internet reviews. There's no answer, it's blank. That was one of the things that he said they were able to do, was investigate, the police. They couldn't investigate tower contracting, but they could investigate Buckeye. They didn't even do that. And the other issue I have with this, is a lot of these projects are old that they investigated, and, back up a second, the person that did the investigation was Doug Alba, who is a community service officer. If someone could define what community service officer is, I would appreciate, I don't know, what is, do they do the traffic lights?
He's a correctly housing officer, so this is what he deals with.
Okay. So, the police chief, or no one else, had anything to do with this? It was all Mr. Alba?
Right.
Okay. Do you know if he contacted these people directly? Did he, how did he get the answers to these questions?
We were given six, six locations to call the police departments where these apartment complexes were at, and asked them just generic questions about police responses, what type of police responses that they had.
Who gave you the six properties?
I did. Mr. Niemeyer did.
Yeah. How did you choose the six properties?
I basically just picked six of them, some were older, some were newer, just, I just randomly picked them.
Just randomly picked?
Yep, yep, just to...
Like, this one, 35 units, but we're going to do 47, and then seven more buildings?
Whoa, 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 there's no seven more buildings. That's, there's seven, there may be seven pieces of vacant property on Oak Park Avenue, which could be, should an owner decide...
Seven additional buildings.
But not by this, necessarily, by this developer, anybody else. We've got no, I, there's nothing on our table, unless staff knows something, I don't. There's not, there's, 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 no, I, I...
If I, I'll get out the iPad, if I have to, there's been talking, there's been emails, seven additional buildings. But anyway, that's not a revelation.
Oh, thank you.
The part of it is, the buildings that were chosen, I have a problem with, because one that I think would be most important, is the one in Sandusky, Ohio, which is right in their backyard. From August 4th, building is largely funded through federal and state tax credit money. Problems: Rooms flooding during heavy rainstorms happening earlier this summer, insects wandering around the building, elevator breaks down, trash, shoot, doesn't work. Buckeye withholds $100,000 from contractor, and won't pay the company in full, until problems are fixed. 100 punch items. This is one of the things that I brought up last time, about why it's so important that tower contracting should have been looked into, because we're, now, we're going to have liens, if this was us, we'd have liens against the building, and we'd be sitting stagnant. I, I'm just, this is the latest one, in 2015, I don't know, how did this one bypass the criteria? I'm just curious.
We were trying to get information on some of the developments. We can certainly, if the board desires, we can certainly call more. It was just, it was just basically just to get information on what, about a half dozen of them, and how they performed.
But this one was the last one.
Okay.
And you said you were allowed legally to Google, it was my favorite word, you were allowed to Google for Buckeye, but not for tower contracting.
Well, as I explained to you at the Planning Commission meeting, we don't have the authority to regulate contractors, that's not...
Exactly, but we're talking about the developer, which you said you could.
No, I didn't say that.
You said the police are allowed to investigate them. And he just said that you chose these six, but...
Basically, what I had the police...
You skipped the worst one.
What I had, what I had the police do, was call to basically find out the history of Buckeye, and how they, they work with the community in the development. That's what I asked them to do.
Okay, well, if you, that one's in Sandusky, that's the, if you could look into that one, for if this ever comes up again, that would be really important.
Thank you. Is there, or is there something else?
I had one other thing, this, is Mr. Baker here? Is he present?
No, I don't see him.
No, I don't see him. Oh, there he is.
How you doing?
Good.
I was curious, on February 1st, the same day that all these recommendations went to the police chief, from yourself, about these properties that passed all the criteria, and the people that you spoke to, I'm confused, like, I just put myself in your shoes. If I'm gonna call a complex, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna speak to the chief, I'm gonna speak to maybe a sergeant, maybe he's off that day, maybe he's on vacation, next to command, you got commanders, you have sergeants, some of these you speak to deputies, you spoke to a 911 supervisor, you spoke to a clerk. This is your paperwork, not mine.
I, I was not doing any kind of police check. I was checking other projects that were funded by the state that were around the metropolitan area, and we were just double-checking if there had been any issues through the village at all, any, any code enforcement issues, any concerns. So we just went straight to the management and to the code enforcement office of those communities. So that was like Cary and Glenview, Mundeline.
No, 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 I'm talking for the ones out of state, the ones on February 1st that you gave to Chief Newbauer. You spoke to deputies, you spoke to a clerk. This is your paperwork. If you'd like to see it, this is the stuff that you have on, online. It's a legal document.
Did I?
Your name's on there, you sent an email, it says, "To Chief Niemeyer, Deputy Chief Mason, from Douglas Alba, all February 1st."
But I'm not a Baker. I don't know about that document.
That's the crime-free housing officer.
So we, he's not here.
Douglas Alba's the director of crime-free housing. These are all...
Okay. Oh, that's right. That was the same day you sent all those same emails. Okay. The, I, the workforce housing that you mentioned, that you spoke, and that, you sent two emails back-to-back in like two minutes to Mike Mertens, that were very lengthy. You spoke of, that you feel that this meets the demand of Tinley Park, because 90% of the people at Walt's Grocery Store meets that income standard.
We were wanting to double-check what the income standards are for the community and for some of our businesses. Absolutely. We made some calls. There's eligible, there's a lot of people that are eligible for that housing.
Made for one-income person.
Okay, it, you know, it could have been...
I haven't, I haven't, can't even see ya.
Sorry. I just, I didn't have a...
Okay, so that's how you came up with that criteria? You picked Walt's?
We just, we just made some calls.
And did you inquire, though, when you made this statement, if that was a one-income house? Is that a part-time job for a wife, maybe?
But going into that detail, we just asked what the pay range was.
And then took that pay range and ran with this email?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cool, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. In a way, I'm kinda disappointed that you tabled the procedures for public comment, because as much as I don't like doing it, I prepared a written statement to stay within the three minutes, and I'm going to just unfortunately stick to the script on the other The board has announced that there will be two inquiries because of the controversy surrounding the reserve. One will address the legacy code and be done by outside independent counsel. The other will be an investigation of the internal procedures regarding the approval process and be done by outside independent counsel. Press reports have noted that you, Mr., you Mayor Seaman, believe the internal investigation can be done in forty days. I put this together about an hour ago, I know you've commented about the different time.
It's not an internal, yeah, it's gonna be an external investigation.
Viewing the emails that became public yesterday, considering the number of people involved and the geographical breadth of the company involved in the project, I don't think that's very realistic. You recently hired outside independent counsel to do an investigation because of a complaint alleging a violation of the ethics ordinance. That took sixty days and addressed primarily one specific individual. Troubling is the fact that counsel found a violation, found that a complaint should be filed in the circuit court, and now I've received a message about how we should try and work this out, short of filing a complaint in the circuit court. Mr. Viz and I have not been able to connect through our voicemails, but that was specifically what he had wanted to talk about. Can we work this out without going to circuit court, even though that's what I had said? The board has a problematic track record with independent investigations. The results of the investigation into the water meter problem was characterized by individuals who had meter problems and in the press as propaganda. And although findings supposedly indicated no major problems with the meters, you've now decided to replace them all. The first ethics investigation concluded that all the elected and appointed officials spoken to were confused about the reporting requirements of the ordinance. That was shown to be incorrect based on inquiries done by the Chicago Tribune years before. Simply put, how hard is it for the elected officials to answer the question, "Where do you work?", and the appointed officials to answer, "Do you do business with the village?" You appointed a term limits commission and then ignored their findings until forced to address the issue because of a second and binding citizens referendum. Do you think these folks, these taxpayers, are skeptical? Of course they are, and with good reason. You have decided not to have someone totally independent from the village of Tinley Park and its purse strings do this independent investigation. With regard to the legacy code review, you've appointed a panel of citizens based on their experience and interests to be involved in the review. You touted the backgrounds and experience of the term limits commissioners as being relevant to their mission. But you won't tell us the criteria for the appointment of this independent counsel to do the internal procedures review, because your decision is gonna be made when you get up from here and go behind closed doors into executive session. And you're gonna have the input and advice of Mr. Melody, the village attorney. But this is the same individual who, according to emails that were put online yesterday, the planning director quote-unquote "followed up with" after she was provided a certificate of consistency to sign that was filled out by the developer. This is the exact thing that you are investigating, and you are gonna have the individual give you advice on who to hire. You thought it important to have the outside eyes of citizens help look at the legacy code. The least you can do for the citizens and taxpayers now is to recognize the importance of having outside eyes of citizens help independent counsel in the investigation of the procedures regarding the approval process for the legacy, or for the reserve. Transparency, credibility, and trust are at issue, and it's up to you gentlemen to let all these people know that that's truly gonna be independent. You didn't like my last suggestion, I'm asking you, Mayor, to stand up and pick out, and go to the other room, too, and get some individuals who's gonna have some input so that their eyes can be on what this internal investigation is gonna consist of, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have an executive session to go to, to make some decisions.
I have one more. As, Mr. Niemeyer, I was wondering if you feel comfortable answering the question, why did you choose, when I asked you that question, to say no when the answer was yes?
What question?
Was anything done to that property at 183rd and Oak Park? Soil borings, Phase One, Phase Two? And you clearly said, "No."
I actually don't remember the question you asked last time.
You want me to play?
You had some question about taxes.
Can I play it? I asked if any of the, any of the Phase One or Two, or soil borings have been done at that property, which lets, which lets us know that the project is moving forward. You clearly said no. Why would you have chose to say that?
I was, that was the information I had. I don't even remember what the question was that you asked last time.
I just told you.
Okay, your point's made.
Well, well...
Your point is made.
Do you need the video? I'll give you the video, because that's, it's taped. It was clearly asked, and it was clear of the question. That's something I think that you guys should have to discuss. He's our highest-paid official in the town, and I can't ask him a question and trust that I'm gonna get an answer. Do you see my point? I mean, it's, he's the highest-paid official in the...
The question that you're asking is not fatal to, to that issue of the development, okay?
It's about honesty.
All right.
How can I trust what you guys are telling us if the guy that we're supposed to look to, to run, to be the village manager, cannot be forthright and honest with us?
Well, I don't know that, I don't know, all right? Because I don't...
To the mayor.
Well, I wasn't there, I didn't have the information, he did, I haven't seen...
I could show you the video if you're concerned about it.
I am concerned about it, please send me the video.
I will send you the video.
You've got my email, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, I, we're about, please, if it's new information, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna switch gears off, off of, off of the reserve project. I know they kinda flew through item eight, which has mercifully been tabled, preferably it would be tabled forever, but since that's not exactly the case, I would like to address Trustee Brady on the, considering the adopting the attached rules, which were, took a considerable amount of digging to find, but now I have them. And you said, this was in regards to, you had this under consideration for months, and, you know, it was gonna be things, stuff's gonna be filmed? None of that's mentioned here in the attached rules, for starters. Like, there's no mention of videotaping or anything in that. The rules, which of, there's two pages, only has one bolded item in it, and that's about the part about asking for people's name, address, and topic to be discussed. Everything else is not bolded. And the reason I bring that up specifically is, is that I think that the village is in the process of getting into a bad shape, where they're opening themselves up to an OMA lawsuit, because there was just a decision in September 4th of 2014, ruling against Lamont, where people were being asked for their addresses. And again, you're putting this in bold, which makes it seem like this is gonna be a point of emphasis, and you can't do that as part of OMA. So I'm going to ask that, I'd really ask for it to be tabled altogether and never brought up for consideration again, but if it is going to be brought up again, that you remove the part where people are asked for their names and their addresses. So what do you say to that?
Well, first of all, I didn't table it, I removed it from the table, which in fact means that it was taken off the table and that it is not gonna be brought here until the future date, if and when the budget audit and administrative committee considers it again, and then at that particular point in time, it will be addressed, and it will be pointed to on the agenda, which is publicly noted and publicly available. I am very sorry about that. So, that's in response to that particular issue. In regard to this being something that's been considered for three or four months, one of the things that we talked about when I was appointed to the board back in August, Mr. Vandenberg, Trustee Vandenberg, had been talking about recording and broadcasting the minutes, not, I'm sorry, not the minutes, but these particular meetings. He brought it up. It's one of the things that had been considered in conversations that I had with various individuals, one at a time, is that when and if we got to the point where we were going to be recording and broadcasting these particular proceedings, that there was a possibility that we needed to consider rules relative to the comments and the questions that people raised. There have been instances where virtually every other town in the area which has broadcasting and recording of the proceedings, they have rules that are referred to in order to allow for the meeting to move forward in a reasonable manner. And we were looking at those particular rules, as well as just our general experience, and that is something that's been considered. The point that I was making at the time that I stated that it's something that we had been considering for three or four months, is that its appearance on the agenda at the last meeting was not the result of the fact that we had heard a lot of people were coming here, which is one of the things that I had been told by various people who checked the various Facebook posts that are being made. So in response to that particular comment, I thought it was important to note that it was not something that was devised just because we expected a lot of people to show up, and that was my point, sir.
All right, well, obviously, I have to keep an eye on that commission, or whatever, you know, thing it is, and then I have to watch all of this. Instead of you just completely not sending it back to them at all, now we all have to pay attention and make sure that we're ready, and believe me, I will be ready, and I'll make sure that I have all of the relevant cases and all the rulings, you know, based on what rules you put, 'cause I'll dig it all up, 'cause I just tried to do this now when you, you know, had this on here. I was perfectly willing to talk about the reserve, but I'm switching up. So, you know, you really could have just killed it all together, but now you're gonna make us go and watch and dig and bring a magnifying glass out, so, you know, don't tell me that it's like, well, you know, it's tabled for now, because you could have killed it, and you did it, and you know that. So, but we'll be watching.
I just had one quick question. Initially, it seemed that the reserve was aimed towards senior citizens, teachers, police officers, veterans, and then suddenly, it seems more geared towards the Walt's employees, Menards, Coles. I was wondering where the shift came from?
I mean, I can't, I wasn't involved in the planning process from the beginning. I don't believe there was a shift. I believe that the veterans had been one of the targets because of low-income issues, people that...
Okay, they hadn't been...
But that's, I don't believe it was ever identified as a senior housing opportunity, ever.
Senior one?
There was a senior one that was talked about at St. George, that was the Pearl Development.
Okay, because like teacher, well, just from a Google search, teachers here in Tinley Park start about 41, so they never should have even been on the radar, and it said that the police officers started about 35. I don't know if that's true or not, but again, any, any overtime or anything along that line, they wouldn't qualify.
That's not, that's not accurate. Okay, thank you. Any other comment? We've gotta get to executive session, so if there's nothing else that isn't already been stated, I would like to ask that the board consider adjourning to executive session for purposes of, A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel, or the employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, and B, litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or tribunal, administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is improbable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call on adjourning to executive session. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yunker.
Yay.
Trustee Brady. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.